I'd like to call to order the recent council meeting Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four. First order of business, invocation by Pastor Dr. White, T. Galloway, of the Greater Brandon Chapel, Bishop and Baptist Church, one one two one Brandon Chapel Road, Alton, Virginia. He's also the president of the Ministerial Alliance of Reevesville as a superintendent and a chaplain at the regional police department. Dr. Galloway.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that everyone pray. Father God, as we come tonight, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for another opportunity, God, to be in another council meeting. Father God, I want to pray tonight for our mayor and all of the council members, God, as they conduct your business tonight. God, I want to pray and ask you, Lord, that everything that is said and done in this meeting tonight will be done not only to your glory, but for the benefit of this great city of Reevesville and for the great citizens that live in it. Do it right now, God, and we will be so grateful to give your name all the praise, the honor, and all of the glory. For it is in Jesus' name we do pray and ask it all, that everybody say, "Amen."
Amen. Could we all rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Barbara, answer your name. We're supposed to sleep tonight. She has some injuries that she's wearing. And there she is. Next order of business, a proclamation and recognition for Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Dr. Galloway. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, a native of Atlanta, Georgia, was tragically killed at age thirty-nine on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight in Memphis, Tennessee, while leading sanitation workers at protests against low wages and intolerable working conditions. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act of nineteen ninety-four, signed into law on August twenty-third of that year by President Clinton, designates the King Ho- uh, federal holiday to be a day of national service. And this year's observation on Monday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, will be celebrated by the citizens of Reevesville, the city of Reeves. Whereas at the heart of Martin Luther King Junior's philosophy was a concept of service. He believed that a person, a person's work was not measured by his cul- culture or class, but rather by his or her commitment to making a better life for all. It is this belief that makes the King of Service a unique holiday because it is challenging, it challenges the workers not only to remember and to celebrate, but also, most importantly, to act and address the issues for which Dr. King and others gave their lives. It's tough to read this particular proclamation because of what Dr. King meant to us all. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Vog, Mayor of the City of Reevesville and the regional city council, do hereby recognize Monday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day in Reevesville, and continue to urge all citizens to join as we rededicate ourselves to the principles of justice and equality for all men, for all the memory of this apostle John Vowles, who gave his life in the crusade for human rights. This is the ninth day of January, twenty twenty four. It's kind of sad to say that this is twenty twenty four, but we still have a whole lot of things that need to change. Dr. Galloway, would you have a word?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and my brothers and sisters today. We want to thank God again for the opportunity to have this day, MLK Day. Um, it's very important that we continue to carry on the legacy. Uh, as you know, Dr. King was a very influential man, God. He not only cared for the African-American race, but he cared for anyone that was socially and racially oppressed. Uh, we do want to mention on behalf of the Ministerial Alliance that we will have three, uh, events that we'll be doing during this MLK weekend, uh, starting Sunday at five o'clock PM at the Jerusalem United Holy Church, where we'll have our annual MLK scholarship and unity service. Uh, then we'll have a commemorative speech on the steps of City Hall at one-thirty on Monday, January fifteenth, uh, with, uh, Elder Kim Moyer being our speaker. And then after that, we'll have our memorial service at the Elrod Baptist Church at three o'clock PM, where, uh, Pastor Johnny Freeman will be our speaker. So we thank God for the opportunities that he has given afforded us. And through Dr. King, we're going to try to keep that dream alive. Thank you.
Next order of business, approval of the consent agenda. We have two items. Does anyone on council who'd like to have one pulled? If not, I'll take a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, not a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, reach right here. Ms. Barbara? Ms. Barbara?
She can't hear us, man, I'm sorry.
Second one we can call, associate.
All right. She voted in the affirmative, and I'm going to leave my phone on, so that she can hear. If the other issue worked out.
Okay.
Oh, she does. Barbara, see if she can hear through the computer app. Can you hear us now?
She might be on mute, because we could hear her earlier.
She spoke.
We could hear you earlier, um, when you were speaking.
Low and clear. Should be right. She talked to you.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to hang up the phone, but if, uh, you're talking on this, then I will, uh, I will begin.
Okay, somebody, I can hear you hang up this phone.
I won't hang up this time, because you should be able to hear through the computer.
Okay.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear me?
Did you just hear someone speak?
She's hearing her through the phone.
Yeah, I think you're hearing first through the computer.
Technology in twenty twenty four.
We're only paying, yeah, sorry. She unmute and see if you can hear after that, okay?
All right. All right.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear us? Ms. Barbara?
No, I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Next order of business is a public hearing. Consideration of a rezoning request for a property located seven oh one Montgomery Street, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel number one five zero two six eight from Neighborhood Business to Res- Residential Six, Z twenty twenty-three dash oh two enclosure one, Jason Harden Public, I mean, uh, Planning and Community Government Director.
Thank you, Mayor of Council and City Manager. Good evening. Trans High Balvo is petitioning to rezone a property located in the South.
Our apologies, darling.
Thank you again. Trans High Balvo is petitioning to rezone a property located at seven zero one Montgomery Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel number one five zero two six eight, uh, from Neighborhood Business to Residential Six, R six. Uh, the stockin number is Z twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Uh, the parcel encompassing area of seven thousand eight hundred forty point eight square feet or point one eight to an acre. A vacant two-story commercial building constructed in nineteen seventeen and for the tax record is located on the lot. Uh, residential dwellings are allowed in the Neighborhood Business District only as an accessory to a commercial use. In other words, a business would need to be the primary use with a residential component as an accessory. So it wouldn't be able to be a principal use residential structure as it is currently. Uh, the surrounding land use is a mix of Neighborhood Business and Residential Six. Uh, the areas to the south and the east are zoned residential six, R six. To the north and the west, the abutting lots are zoned Neighborhood Business and Residential Six. Overall, the area is primarily residential with a few commercial properties, uh, in the area as well. Considering the presence of an abutting residential six, neighborhoods to the south and consistency with the surrounding land use, the zoning designation of R six, uh, for the property would be consistent with the surrounding area. Uh, the property is located in Growth Management Area Two of our available land development plan from twenty twenty-two, uh, which encompasses the area immediately outside of the central business district. So Growth Management Area Two prioritizes expansion of housing stock alternatives, rehabilitation of existing housing stock, and preservation of significant historic structures. Therefore, we find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the twenty twenty-two reasonable land development plan. The planning staff files this rezoning as reasonable and in development interest based on the information provided in our report. And the planning staff recommended the proposed rezoning application be approved. The planning board unanimously recommended the proposed rezoning be approved. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Jason? Public hearing opens at six fifteen. Does anyone here who'd like to speak for? Does anyone here who'd like to speak against? Public hearing closes at six sixteen. Any discussion amongst council? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mayor, at the rezoning application.
That's an approved motion.
What's approved? Don't care. It's approved. All right, let's see that there. All right, um, Mayor to the city council. I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specific parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda package submitted during the rezoning presentation and may be amended, incorporated to the motion to be included in the minutes. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in table, open the approval room. Reach right here. Shanals. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a special use permit request to place a manufactured house or home on a vacant property located on Hill Street, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel number one five four one zero six, uh, S twenty twenty-three dash three enclosure two. Jason.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilman, Manager. Michael C. Rodriguez has applied for a special use permanent, SEP, for a vacant property located on Hill Street, specifically Parcel number one five four one zero six. The applicant requests any approvals to place a manufactured home at this location. Uh, the property is, um, Residential Six, R six, and manufactured homes are allowed with a special use permit. Michael C. Rodriguez is the applicant and the property owner. Uh, the standards and the ordinance for manufactured homes on single lots are as follows. Uh, mobile homes slash manufactured homes on single lots must be built to HUD standards, National Mobile Home Construction and Safety Standards Act. Uh, each unit must have been constructed within five years of the date of issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance and must have a seal of compliance per, per general statute one four three dash one four four. Uh, each unit must further comply with the following criteria. Uh, the manufactured home has a length nine feet and four times its width, and the pitch of the manufactured home's roof has a minimum vertical rise of two and two tenths feet for each twelve feet and four tunnel run, and the roof is finished with shingles. The exterior siding consists predominantly of vinyl or aluminum, uh, horizontal lap siding, wood or hardwood. A continuous permanent masonry curtain or foundation and unpierced except for ventilation and access is installed under the manufactured home. The tongue acupoints and removable towing apparatus and transporting lights are removed after final placement on the site. They forge at least sixteen square feet in size and it is four feet by four feet in dimensions. The stairs must be attached to the front entrance of the home in a worksmanship manner that meets the North Carolina schedule. But the applicant is required to meet these criteria in addition to any conditions placed on the special use permit. Uh, council must come to certain findings. You swear, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, if there's, everybody needs to talk.
Yeah.
All right, if there's anyone who's planning to speak at this public hearing, I need to swear them in, because it's a special use permit. Is there anyone that's planning to speak from the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
All right, so swear that anything you're going to say today is the whole truth and doesn't matter truth to the public, God.
Uh, the applicant is required to meet these criteria in addition to any conditions placed on the special use permit. Council must come to certain findings and fact regarding the impact of the development on the area. It is the applicant's responsibility to provide evidence and materials that will allow council to take the appropriate action. The board may also recommend conditions on the application to ensure that the proposed project meets the intent of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the following are the specific findings and facts from the zoning ordinance in which council must find. Uh, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of located where proposed development, or where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. Uh, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use of the public necessity. The location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area and which is implicated and generally conformity with the land development plan for retail land that's district territorial jurisdiction. Uh, planning staff recommend the following out, uh, following conditions be placed on the special use permit. Uh, the use shall comply with the special use criteria for manufactured slash mobile homes per the reasonable zoning ordinance, and the unit shall comply with the North Carolina State Building Code. Uh, planning records, the planning board unanimously recommended the special use permit be approved to the staff recommended, uh, recommended conditions. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Public hearing will open at six twenty-two. Anyone who'd like to speak for, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes. Thank you, good. Let me get first of all. And, uh, I came from Miami. My mom lives here, and I fall in love with the city of Louisiana. I bought a house, I'm not so far from here, uh, three oh four Hughes Street. Um, I bought the house, I believe, like, about fifty thousand dollars. I sold the house about a few months ago for two hundred thousand dollars. It was not the house that I wanted, and, um, I made a mistake, but I sold it as a beautiful house. Anyways, um, I purchased an old home, also very close, you know, like I said, I love the city. And, uh, I purchased that house for like thirty thousand dollars, and I invested a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the house. Love the house. I want to leave with this home. Uh, unfortunately, I'm having a, uh, a little issue. There's a funeral home right across the street from this house that I, that I just finished. And, uh, it's very sad to, uh, come to my house. Uh, most of the time, they block in my driveway whenever they have to service any funeral homes, and I really don't feel comfortable coming and telling these people to, you know, get the cars out of the way. So I also own an half an acres, which is this property that we're talking about here. And I just bought this small home. It's, uh, almost new and, um, very beautiful as well. I wrote a bunch of pictures of the, uh, jobs that I've done here in the city before and the after. And, uh, the idea, the plan for this, uh, manufactured home that I'm bringing to this half acre, which is also a few blocks away from, from, from here, maybe like five minutes away actually, we'll say. So I, I'm very, I'll be very happy if you guys can approve this for me. Thank you very much.
Everyone who was going to speak had to be sworn in. I mean, did any of you have any questions on this, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I did, I had a question.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Either him or Jason.
Okay.
I can answer this question, but, uh, in the packet. Either him or Jason might can answer this question, but in the packet, under the requirements, what was called back the masonry curtain, and then the pictures in here show a vinyl underneath, it's supposed to be brick underneath, or it's gonna be vinyl?
No. The idea is like, well, let me actually show you that to answer a bit of that question. This is the, show you. As, as, yeah, it's all concrete, it's very beautiful. So I'd like to share it with you guys. It's all gonna be concrete, and I have a professional company that's gonna do all the insulation. I will stick to all the rules and regulations for the city of Reed'sville, and I'll be professional with that.
That's beautiful.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jason, again.
Any other question? Public hearing will close at six twenty-five. As Jason said, we have to go through the findings and facts, and invoke each one of the four. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Those in favor?
Support, are you in favor of the first finding of fact? Yes.
Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Those in favor?
The second finding of fact? Yes.
Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, or that the use is a public necessity. Those in favor, raise your hand.
The third finding of fact?
And finally, the location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will not, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the land development plan for Reed'sville and its surroundings. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to have a motion as to the approval of the special use permit. Does that motion?
So moved.
Second. Was it tied?
Oh, okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Can you approve the special use permit? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
All right, next we have consideration of a request to reasonably vacant partial location off South Park Drive.
Mayor, before we go on to the next question?
They, they, the two conditions, they were, I won't, I won't think that they were specific, no.
Should they be a part of the motion?
You can make a motion to, for those following conditions to be placed on this.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that the two conditions be placed on the special use permit. Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Yes. Yes.
Right, now, consideration of a request to rezoning vacant parcel located off South Park Drive, specifically Rocket Hand County Tax Parcel 173833 from residential twenty to conditional zoning residential twelve. A public hearing was held on this item on November fourteenth, but the vote was delayed by council for further consideration. CZ twenty twenty-three dash oh two enclosure three. Jason, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Manager. Just to give council a recap on this application, council considered the application, as the mayor said at the December meeting, and held the required public hearing as required by the North Carolina general statutes. Just to give a brief, very brief recap on the application, just for council's information, Belmont State's LLC petition to rezone a vacant parcel located off the South Park Drive, Rocket Hand County Tax Parcel number 173833, from residential twenty, R twenty, to conditional zoning residential twelve, CZ R twelve. The requested conditions include allow the land uses to be townhomes only, so that means the land uses restricted to townhomes exclusively, and providing a connection to the existence of reasonable J.C. Park Greenway as a development condition. No other use conditions have been requested by the applicant, and all other developments stated for the R twelve zoning district shall apply. The applicant has provided a conditional zoning master plan as required by the ordinance. The planning staff did recommend that the application be approved based off the highest location and growth management area number three of the land development plan, which will be primarily for residential development, and goal number three of original plan to expand available housing stock. The planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed conditional zoning application be denied. All there remains is for the council to take whatever action it desires for this application. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if that's the will of council.
There were some questions that came about in reference to perhaps some single level homes. Could you elaborate on that?
That would be a question for the applicant, because conditions added have to be voluntarily accepted by the applicant, that's North Carolina general statute law. So I would defer that question to the applicant, as far as if you wanted to add it at this point. So you have a couple of options. If the applicant chooses to add voluntarily, again, adds the conditions to the application, council can either refer it back to the planning board for reconsideration, or council can give them, can approve it, with the stipulation that the rezoning is only effective if they submit within whatever time period council sees fit. I would recommend ten days, but whatever time period you see fit, to submit in writing that they will adhere to the condition, and the rezoning will only be effective if they submit in writing that they will adhere to the condition that council has asked, and that they have voluntarily agreed to. So that's your two options at this point, as far as adding any conditions. Or of course, you can vote to approve or deny as it is.
Is there anyone here tonight that could answer to that particular question?
I believe Andrew Wallace is here. If you'd like to.
Good evening. My name is Beau Harfman, I'm an attorney, represents the county here, Mr. Andrew Wallace is here, to ask the applicants. The, my understanding, and I'll ask Andrew if he has to elaborate, that that condition is just not gonna work with this particular project. It's not gonna be feasible to do a single-story townhome or single, single under residential with this particular project. We're open to other conditions, but this is not one that they quite certainly agree to. This is, just to point out, to increase the current usage of the HADAs upright, this is just a simple rezoning of a matter. If you, so the request tonight is to approve as, as submitted to this council, but there are other conditions, other questions. I'm happy to take a spot answering. Mr. Wallace is here to also answer any questions you might have. But I don't understand, I don't believe that the single level homes is something that can easily be done, so I'd like to do so. Andrew, elaborate?
Andrew Wallace, and welcome. But the intent for this type of product, which was the two-story townhome, fits within the proposed builder that we have and their plan, but not only that, there's another, the proposed builder also has a development on Liberty Road that is offering quite a few, I think, close to four hundred, not close to four hundred homes, maybe a little less, and those are single-family homes, number of which are single-level. So the intent was to keep that product there, and then use the multi, multi-family homes, two-story homes on this particular site. So I feel like that product and that desire to fill that need is being offered very close by, and we, based on our pro forma, we'd like to stick with the multi-family, the two-story. There's, the one reason we're driving that too is the amount of land that we're utilizing. I mean, we've got forty-five, forty-four plus acres, so we're trying to condense that and use the two-story, whereas ten of the, almost eleven of those acres will be established as protected area, possibly even conservation. That's, that's the intent right now.
Basically, you're gonna have thirty, thirty, thirty-four acre, buildable acres?
There, there is more, but we've, we've been at the suggestion of the town, and also our pro forma utilizing only thirty of those, thirty-one somewhere in that neighborhood. Final drawings aren't complete, but I think that R twelve, or the R twelve allows us to go up to four hundred plus units, and we are stopping at two hundred units and utilizing the rest of that area as conservation is done. And again, offering another product through the, the home builder that we're proposing on another site. Yeah, and I think, right, half cables is reminding me too, in our development, our initial plan, that, that the greenways in that easement down along Troublesome Creek, we are not only proposing in that, in the application to connect to the existing greenway, but extending the greenways through our property, through an easement or whatever means is amiable to you all, then the sidewalks to the, to the high school. Where we can commit, these are some of the conditions, if you wish to talk about, we're willing to implement.
Now, at the last meeting that happened in November, you were talking about, I think, the builder, and you talked about D.R. Horton.
Yeah.
Is that who you've decided to go with, or is it somebody else?
We have not signed a contract with them. We've been working with them even further since the last meeting, but it is, we have not signed a lot purchase agreement with them as of yet.
So I'm just curious, because you gave a thing on the TV screen, and said it was D.R. Horton to build those homes off. If, if you don't go with D.R. Horton, how will they be built then? Are you planning on building these yourself, or other contractor?
No, there will be another production builder, agree with entertainment, but something similar to those.
Yeah.
Materials would be similar. Roof lines would be similar.
Gotcha.
So as the zoning sets now, you couldn't build your, you couldn't build your homes, how many homes could you build there now with the zoning that's currently there?
I can answer that. Currently in our, in our twenty, so townhomes are allowed in our twenty with a special use permit, right now. So it's slightly lower density, you're limited to about three point seven units an acre. So you could do probably, I think, around one hundred and forty-one, what?
One forty-one, one forty-two.
It was something, something to that effect. So all the R twelve does is it increases the density slightly, and it gets around fifty more units. So basically what the applicant's asking for is about fifty more units than what's allowed of the special use permit.
I thought you said you could build four hundred based off the R twelve.
No, if it was, if you want to maximize it.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to maximize it, we just want to go to two hundred. If they adhere to the, the stop R twelve.
Two hundred or one ninety-four, I don't have any excuse. Last time you said two fifteen, so I heard one ninety-four or two hundred, two fifteen.
The, the current plan that we submitted was at one ninety-four, and speaking with Fire Marshal, Public Works, D.R. Horton, ourselves, that the sweet spot is right at two hundred, and we would be willing to capital it back.
You, you've been involved with this the whole time, right? Back in two thousand and six, right? So when it was rezoned before to start building, wasn't there discussion about mix of townhomes and single level homes?
At that time, there was, but the, the EQ, Department of Environmental Quality has revised their guidelines, and we could not encroach nearly as close to Troublesome Creek as we could then.
So you know the actual building acres there, I'm just curious, how many buildable acres are there if you maximize it? You're saying you're taking away?
If you maximize it, it's forty-two acres to maximize it. We don't want to build on forty-two acres.
But you, you can't build on all forty-two acres, can you, because of the creek that runs through there and the bar shed?
That's right.
So I'm asking, taking all that out, how many buildable acres, you have thirty, twenty-eight?
At two hundred units, we're gonna do about twenty-eight acres, so there's roughly fifteen acres that's not gonna be touched.
But you, you couldn't touch that fifteen acres anyways?
We could go further if we put larger retaining walls.
We have no desire.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, how much further can you go if, say if you did maximize, you got twenty-eight acres as it is without having to put in retaining walls and that type of stuff, but if you did, how many buildable acres are there?
About forty-two. You can buy into the wetland act. I mean, you can take into the wetland act and do, do all that crap that doesn't matter to nothing, but...
Yeah, it's money to the houses.
So we're gonna touch twenty-eight acres for two hundred homes. The difference in a hundred and forty-one units and two hundred units, there's nothing. The traffic studies say everything, it doesn't even affect a fraction.
Yeah, I, I don't care about the traffic studies, this is, the road there for ten thousand plus vehicles today. But what I do care about is that the planning board voted it down unanimously. We haven't had a single person in the community speak out in favor of four of this, and reasonable has multiple projects in the works, you know, for over four hundred and some apartments, which in my opinion would be essentially the same thing as, as townhomes, same type of living. So we got four hundred apartments that can go in behind the food line right there near, we have two hundred and some apartments that are getting ready to be built, double holiday loop roads, there's a six hundred and some apartments roughly. And then the project that you were speaking of on Liberty Road, Liberty Road, four hundred and eighty homes that are gonna be, that are gonna be in a, in what I believe to be a more affordable housing.
So that it's actually a thousand units?
Yeah.
To be, to...
But they have four eighty right now.
Just a thousand.
Permitted, from my understanding, yeah.
For the last whole four phases.
Yeah, 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 which is gonna be low, lower end homes. I'm not saying that, I don't disagree that we may not have a need for this type housing, multi, two-story housing, but I think there are locations where such housing as this fits in certain neighborhoods, and I don't believe, in my opinion, that those type housing belongs in this neighborhood. I think there, and there's opportunities for growth in reasonable, and there are places that, that these, in my opinion, will fit better in. I'm not against growth, I'm not against you building, but I don't think that these projects fit into this, into this neighborhood, given the surroundings of it. Also, there's no R twelve adjacent or adjoining to any of this property as well right now. There is some, a way, but nothing adjacent or joining or... There is some, a way, but nothing adjacent or joining or inside of it. So I don't agree, you know, I don't agree with that. And I just don't think it fits in there for.
So you guys, Regisville, they're booming. They're growing, booming. We got it. Love it. I eat it up. So all these young, young athletes come to Regisville and we've offered to build greenways, put in sidewalks, get into the high schools and whole neighborhoods. And there's teachers there. And, you know, if we need to build something down the road, we want the property down the road, but it comes a different financial area or realm to build single-family townhomes. If the single-family people want to be on McCoury and Liberty, that's, that's over there. That's two miles away.
The complaints, the complaints that I have heard from everyone here and even referring back to the planning zone, planning board meeting where they unanimously denied it, is they don't want townhomes in the area. And everyone that I've spoken to individually has no problem and they're aware that this property has the potential to be developed with housing. But, and I wouldn't have a problem with developing it with, with housing or, or with single-level townhomes that are on the more nicer scale. And it is, in my opinion, that this is one of our most highest real estate areas in our nice areas. So people are looking for comparable housing, you know, $350,000 plus, you know, in that area. And the people in this neighborhood are the ones who have to deal with this. But we have a lot of housing going on throughout the community right now, projects to be built. And I don't see where, if we don't build 200 townhomes, that it is going to affect us financially nor affect the impact of jobs that can come into this community without this particular project. But what it will affect is a lot of people in the neighborhood who've been there, who don't want it. And there's no zoning that is adjacent or adjoining that matches what you're requesting. It's all R20. There's no R12 nowhere near that, near that area.
Well, it was R12 until two years ago.
It was R12, if my understanding was over, when special use was incorporated in that. But it was originally R20. You applied for R12 with special use to build a smorgasbord of different type housing in there. Then you took it back from that to the R20 to try to back up and re-punt, to rezone to the R12 with no special use or no other contingencies that you requested, the 200 townhomes.
So financially, on the real estate side, you can't make a court. It's financially impossible to do it. And with, you put in 200 units, 140 units on board. You put in 200 units, you bring in $800,000 in tax revenue to the city. We're giving them $100,000 in greenways. You give them $50,000 in sidewalks, upfending roads, everything to give it back. But you can't turn around and say, here's 140 units. It financially doesn't, it doesn't do anything.
I would ask you to build 140 units. What I'm saying is, is unless you had, unless you.
We're voting on zoning.
Correct. So R20, which is gonna allow you to build housing or with special use, would allow you to build a certain amount of townhomes that would fit in the parameters of the buildable acres there. It doesn't fit in terms of, I agree from a business decision, if you maximize.
Whether you build low-income housing, just, we can go in there all day long, build $50,000 houses all day long, if it just.
If it's approved through the planning board.
You've got 140 units. We have 140 units. It's already approved. We're trying to give a great product and give it back to the city and say, here it is, here's your $1 million. And we're trying as hard as we can.
But what I'm saying is, is the people in the community don't want it. This is just my opinion. I'm not saying they're gonna vote for or against. I'm telling you how I feel and what everybody else feels, you know. And so I'm obviously not for it, you know. I feel that my job, my job is to represent the people who elected me into this position. But my job is also to create growth and, like you said, look for tax dollars. But with all the other projects that we have coming up in the city in terms of housing, we've got close to 1,000, well, just 1,000 when the four acres, the four phases over there, but with apartment complexes and all these things. And there are certain locations where these type of projects fit. To me, I feel like you're putting low-income housing in here and icing it there. It's a $50,000 house.
This is good.
$1,500 square feet.
Can you imagine the students that's gonna go to Regisville High School, that's gonna live there? Regisville High School is top of the food chain. I'll watch the football, watch the basketball. They're top of the food chain. They're gonna live there. They're gonna come.
But we're, we're all entitled, they're, they're got, and they have other options. It's what we're all entitled to, our opinions.
I love that comment. And I know that we, it keeps being mentioned about what, what happened two years ago or whatever. And we know, as a business owner, I know that costs are tremendously higher now than they were two years ago. You cannot come in here and build what you were gonna do two years ago and make a profit. And if you can't make a profit, then you don't want to be in business. I understand that exactly. It's already approved. You could come in and build 144 units. And you're asking permission to do 50 more units.
That's it.
Um.
Not, not 400.
Right. I understand that.
And I also want to say that all of these apartments that are around the high school, nobody wanted those either. But now they're there and we have filled them up. There's nothing available. These are gonna be townhouses that are for sale. They're, it's not rental property. It will be owned, it will be owned so people that live there will be vested in that property. And my understanding is that your, your average selling point is gonna pretty much be equal to the houses that are around the areas. So it's not like you're coming in with a low, low income or low-valued homes.
So the townhomes, the selling point, what I was told are $250,000.
They are.
Or less than $1,500 square feet roughly.
I think it's close to, you're right on the square foot. But the dollar value is, is more like a 225.
So less than 225. So we're saying the average home in the.
Well, I live in that area and I don't have a problem. I live in that area, but there's a lot of homes in that area that range all different prices. There's homes that's been there for years and years and years. And there's homes that people have just built. So it is a very diverse community.
And you know, what area you're, you're in there. I've actually spoken to three different realtors to pull home sales and averages in the neighborhood. And we had a gentleman that spoke at the last meeting and pulled comps for the sales in that neighborhood. So I didn't just listen to him, actually reached out to two other realtors by listening to what he said that night. And the average home sales in that area are closer to the $500,000 range when you pull comps in that area, not in 225.
Are they selling agents or marketing agents?
Both. That's why I took, that's why I got opinions from three different realtors from a standpoint and what we needed from a realtor's standpoint, what would sell, what wouldn't sell. And you were speaking that people will purchase these homes and they're not rental property. There's nothing that prevents this from being rental property. And in my opinion, a $1,500 square foot townhome that sells for $25,000 is gonna be no different than that of the apartment complexes that are already located behind Food Line there. And that's, that's just my opinion.
But we're pro-Regisville. We're pro-Regisville High School.
I appreciate that.
We support, I live here.
I live too.
I live here. Grew up here, lived here, hold my yards. And I am pro-Regisville High School, Regisville. I support them 100%. And if we continue the Regisville booming the way it is, I'm all on it. I will support it, dump into it, everything.
Well, what we don't, what we don't have been built in the Regisville area or not many places in Rockingham County that people are looking for, such as Karima employees and stuff, the casino employees out of Danville, the executives and the higher people, they're looking for more expensive housing. And the tax revenue offset from 60 houses versus, you know, the, talking $800,000. It's not gonna be $800,000. So if you build homes there, we might get $500,000 in tax revenue. If there's homes.
You can't build low homes.
Well, how do they build the homes in Pine State area across the road? Somebody made money. They built and developed that area.
Where do yours go?
Yeah, I understand. I'm a contractor myself too, to do commercials, travel, have a whole license in multiple states. So I very understand developmental processes and, and building and making money from the business. But there's money to be made. But it's your business decision of what you choose to build and make that money. There's not the same amount of money to be made versus building those homes versus building 200 townhomes. Because if there was no money to be made in building homes or making developments like that, we wouldn't have contractors building that type of stuff in the area now. We went, we got a 48 house, 40 houses to go.
Somebody with 140 units and added 50 to it. That's it.
Jason, I want to ask you a question. When we spoke about this R20's open and R12, you told me as it stood, if I understood you correctly, that they can build houses in here without a special use permit?
Yes. And R20, single-family homes are allowed.
They cannot build 140 units in this R20 without being granted a special use permit and applying for townhomes. Correct. So you cannot build 140 townhomes in here in R20 unless you are granted a R20 special use permit. Straight zoning, you cannot. And there is no special use permit, but this is a straight R20 right now. When you, when you had it rezoned, you rezoned it back to R20. So I want to be clear, 140 townhomes cannot be built on this property without him going back through planning and zoning and requesting a special use permit. Correct. Okay. If we make a motion to leave this R20, he can build whatever houses will allow him to fit on the buildable acres, whether it's 28 acres or retaining walls or whatever he chooses to do, correct?
As we know in lots of, some, some.
20, yeah, 20-some thousand square feet. So you can get roughly a house per half acre. You got 28 buildable acres in there, you can, you can build two houses per acre roughly.
Now, Jason, when we started, didn't you, didn't you explain to us what would happen about whether we approved it or disapproved it as far as it didn't have, you didn't mention it would have to go back to planning board?
It's not. No, you can, of course, you can deny it as it is and it's done. If you deny it as it is. If you, the part I mentioned going back to planning board was if you wanted to, there was gonna be agreed upon conditions between council and the applicant.
Other than what we, what is written?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. So. When we go back to.
But based on what is written, if it's approved tonight, it does not go back to planning board?
No.
Thank you.
If I could clarify one, one point, you know, some of what you were making. It is true that if you don't approve this, 140 units would have to go through the special use process. A permit, but that's a very different process than what's reported now.
Correct.
You don't have the discretion you do tonight, as you would have in special use permit process. We feel extremely confident that we can, that special use permit process, the council will have a choice what to approve as a matter of law. We don't, that would appeal all the way up through. This is, this is the one night you guys have to have any, any say really in what this is gonna look like. And I get that Hesmond City Town Homes, this is the new building project that's coming onboard, not just here, but across the state. I've worked and tidling four or five of these over the last year. Townhomes are not something that's usually been built over the last 30, 40 years. People are more comfortable seeing the same in single-family homes. But it's gotten to a point where it's not affordable for people to build single-family detached homes at an affordable price or even buy, especially as a residential home. And so the only way to do it economically is to build, it's called missing middle housing, your townhome, duplex and whatnot. And the city of Asheville, which, which is where I come from, just did a new study on it, multimillion dollar study, and they're committed to the building of townhomes. City of Greensville now does not promote the building of townhomes. These are homes for people who can't afford the same homes that the CEOs can afford.
Correct.
These are people, these are homes for people who want to buy, but they can't own a single-family detached home. These are, these are homes for people who, even my generation, or any generation, you know, coming up. You see a poor home for $250, $220 for this, which is not, that's not out there in the state anymore. So this, this project's meant to address that list to build. And not only wants to do this, it's being done across the state, across the country. And so this is a chance for, for Regisville to be the front end of the building of townhomes, which is what's happening across the nation. And again, I get that Hesmond City townhomes are new. They used to build them back in the 50s and 60s.
I don't have a problem with townhomes. I just said there, there are other buildable properties where there would be less, I don't know if animosity is the correct word for this, in terms of the people in the neighborhood and better suited neighborhoods for a $225,000 townhome. And that, that's my opinion. I want to ask you a question. So you said that this is our opportunity to have a say in this. You feel confident that if we deny this, you would make the appeal for a special use permit for the 140 townhomes. Well, if you've done that, that's still your choice. But you just said that even reducing the number and building, and number is not feasible for them anyway. So regardless of what is, but you also made a statement that we wouldn't get any say that, you alluded that you could take this to court, try the rezoning, R20 under special use permit, and then just immediately start building. And we would get no say in the construction or the layout. When the planning and zoning department, everyone makes approvals to what you, what you have. So we submit these plans and they do it, build apartments all local to state and all down the east coast. They may come back and make changes to development. So whether it's commercial or residential property, so we do get a say. Explain to me what you mean by we don't then, if I'm wrong in what I said.
Yeah, so special use permit process is a temporary process where as long as the applicant meets certain conditions, you have to approve as a matter of law. Actually, conditions is the wrong word. It's not conditions. It's if they meet the building code, the ordinance, they can do this. And the, the people, the, the, as long as a work adjustment inside this.
But you said ordinance and the ordinance come from municipalities.
Correct.
Correct. So he has to meet our ordinances to build 140 homes. If the courts granted him, even if he applied for a special use permit and wanted, and we denied a special use permit, he has to conform to whatever ordinances that we have in place for that area to build this. He doesn't just, so you made a statement that alludes to the rest of the people and rest of the council members that he can still just come and construct here 140 townhomes and we get no say. And I'm just saying that that's a little misleading. We do, he has to conform to our ordinances.
Right. When I say you don't get a say, that's not, that's, of course you get a say. There's a process they have to go through. Even after tonight, if you approve this, they have to go through the permitting process and everything to make sure it complies with the building code, the ordinance and everything else. So when I say you don't get a say, I'm talking to your council members, not the city of Regisville.
Yeah, we have a say in what the ordinance is on.
Yeah.
So there would be, I think, I said all I have to say. I think everybody knows where I stand from the rest of the county.
I have a comment. We know that we are behind the ball when it, when it comes to housing in Regisville. There is such, you know, there's apartments are not available. We have very low inventory for housing that we sell. But we also know what's coming with the casino and so many people. Our goal has always been to get professional people to come to Regisville. They can work anywhere they want. We would like for them to live in Regisville. And this is what they're looking for. I've lived in a townhouse, you know, for years. Professional, young professional people, they don't want yards to mow. They want a very small area that they have to take care of. And everything that I've read and investigated, this is what people want.
You're, you're exactly right. If this is generation, they want to be able to walk places, have a community. But that's just not, remember that there's numerous legislation along. And the housing shortage is not a Regisville problem. And the housing shortage is not a Greensville problem. This is not a problem, it's a nationwide problem. So, I see this as the news to the public, but that's all not to say.
I want to make one more statement here, then follow up. So, she said this is what the people want. But what I would say is the people that put us here in this position to make these, I haven't heard a single person, I've heard outsiders say this is what they want. And I'm saying this is hype, it's fitted and suited and I would need, have it in other locations. But I have an obligation to the people to carry out the will of the people because we're elected for the people, by the people. So, we're not elected for the outsiders, you know.
I 100% agree. You're doing your job right now. So, I did that. And I think you're asking a little good questions. I'm just saying that this is, this townhome is the, this is the new thing. If all the, all the cities are already pushing this, you can go on to Greensville and YouTube video on how they're stressing the missing middle being built.
I think we have other locations in Greensville that you could look at as an investor that would be suited for this project and would bring this, you know.
One final, one final point, and I'll be quiet, is they own the property as it is.
Yes.
You know, they can, they can decide off to build townhomes, might as well go back to the law and build something.
Correct.
So, you guys don't get any say at all, and there could be some co-existence, you know. But I don't think they're planning on doing that.
Correct.
They want something for the community, but they could. So, this is your chance to have something, have legislative say, legislative say in what's happening.
Build anything you want to conform to the ordinances.
We can make work.
And zoning, you know, as it is. Yes.
And that's true, and what we're talking about tonight, we're supposed to be voting on zoning.
I said zoning.
That's the only thing that we're supposed to be concerned about tonight.
Fifty more times. All right, if there are no other questions? Any other questions? You love.
Um, hold on.
Okay.
She had a question.
Is it our objective to look at what Greensville needs rather than to grow because we're wanting to bring more businesses here? And as Teresa said, mostly all people do not want houses.
That's correct.
Cause I would have enough off two story townhouses too.
That's correct.
So, please, I'll be holding ourselves back if you don't go ahead and expand.
So, I assume that the question would be directed to me, but with all the houses that we have, a thousand houses to be built, the project on Holiday Loop, South Park, Sherwood Drive, 400 apartment units going there, seems like maybe we're already half committed projects past and ready to expand housing by close to 2,000 homes.
And we're the first to bring it around.
Minus the, minus these 200 townhomes, you know, that are already in the works. So, there's no way that I'm not against growth in Greensville. I'm against growth. I think growth needs to be done in a manner that, that there are certain ways to grow and there are certain ways. And we also have a duty to our constituents to follow through the ordinance. It would be different if we had no other projects going and we were stagnant, no other housing. We have housing in general and affordable housing and that type of stuff already taking place to attract growth and that is going to allow us to bring in more citizens and more people to the community. If we're based off of what Rileger said, well, we are voting on zoning anyways, but I'm not, I'm very pro-growth for Greensville, but I'm for smart growth as well though.
Any other questions?
You open this back here back to public comments, right? Comments for us?
Yep. All right, tonight we're here to vote on the zoning matter. And I'd like to get a motion.
A motion to deny. A motion to deny, I don't make my motion to deny the proposed rezoning for the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon consistency and reasonableness determination. Statements there included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and is may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the motion.
All right, there's been a motion to deny. Is there? A second.
I would second that.
All right, those in favor of deny, raise your right hand. 2024. Barbara, do you vote to deny or approve? There's been a motion to deny.
Been a motion to deny, I think I abstain.
Okay. Two to five. With that being done, what's the next step? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, not to approve it.
Do I have a second?
I'm not agreeing. I make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning for the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Barbara, you stated on. Those opposed? Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is a presentation, consideration of city of Greensville audit beginning June 30, 2023. We have a separate enclosure for that, for the Giamati Dufferty, from Terry Becker.
Getting right into it. So, the results are on, we audit the financial data of the city in accordance with their accepted audit standards. We also have, since we've been corporate, that's all in which we provide opinion on the financial statements, that this Greensville assurance of financial statements are free from any material statement. We also audit the city's compliance with its federal and state grants that you adhere to. And we do provide opinion on the compliance of those grants. And we issued unmodified opinions on all opinions that we had given during our audit. So, that's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements and then also on your compliance with federal and state grants. An unmodified opinion is also known as a clean opinion, which is the highest level opinion we could give under our audit standards. It's just, uh, details for you, the grants that we've done that. We have one federal grant, which is recorded by our existing state, which is for recovery funds, also known as market funds. And then we also take back some howl bills, which you can look at with us every year, which takes money, money to increase for recovery date aid for, for a pay basis. This slide will be based on statements that you do, any indication of liability, but you know, not issues anything on control. How do you, uh, affect it, affect itself on control? How do you violate inside life, by any error, issue, and the issue with career error? I'm doing nothing by default. And next slide here is the following, what material we can, in the 50s of the year, material we've been dealing now that grew through a possibility that earlier was a complete, or no, not, I might have looked at text that that would be material from the identity phase of the rent cover. And then in the big, big discussion, we do one, one of them, that material we can still go forward and not to choose, I'm aiming to a wall or error of the following. We can get more material weakness in a lot of life. So, I had, I had a year, I do view, we are talking funding, and I had to view rec recognition of revenue. Rec revenue, rec recognition prior to construction, and, and, that, that revenue that had been recorded on other revenue, like rec recognition, more, more, county, county area, based on general, county, county, mountain, should have been, recorded on liability, one, one year, until it was spent back in the 2004, rather than. We had no, no rec recognition dates. I mean, I had one, other, what I, I, I considered, no, no other rec recognition dates. And then I had, I had, I had, I had, I had money, I had, I had, I had, I had, I had red, red, red recognized when money, money exceeded. Uh, it really, really not a lot of barriers from, that money, that money, that money can be used and, 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 but money, still, still, could be recognized a little, and, 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 the next, next slide, I had to go, try to write it very, very quickly here, pre, 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 uh, disposal, no, 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 no,
Friends and data. Sales have increased throughout the entire county. Older, lower valued homes have increased throughout the entire county. Even existing home sales are stronger throughout the entire county. Land throughout the entire county has increased in value. Development and expansion of subdivisions for the last couple of years have increased. And the North Carolina DOR sales ratio study for our county showed as of May of last year now, it showed us at sixty-nine point five-five percent, which is probably a little lower than that now, it's probably around sixty-five percent. And in 2019, we were one hundred point seven-seven percent. The new assessed values will become effective as of January one, 2024. And property owners will be notified with a new property value by mail in late March of 2024. Common question we always get is how much will my property value change? Property value changes will vary depending upon several factors. Type of property, physical condition, location. There is no set, there is not a set percentage or of a set value of increase or decrease that can be applied across all types of properties throughout Rockland County. As a result, the resulting rate of property value decrease or increase will be varied. How much will a revaluation affect my tax bill? At this point, there is no way for us to determine how much your tax bill will be affected by revaluation. The Rockland County Board of Commissioners, City Councils, Town Councils, and private districts will set the effective tax rates by July one of 2024. What do I do if I do not agree with the new assessed values? An appeal can result in a no change, decrease, increase in value. We will have a online Check My Value tool on our county website that you can submit your appeal through if you disagree with your value. Or you can fill out and sign the appeal form with your change of value notice and promptly return it to the tax office by mail or email. If you would include documentation and a supplemental information necessary to review the appeal. If you're still not satisfied with your value, the next level of appeal is the Rockland County Board of Equalization and Review. And if you do not agree with that, with the board's decision, you can appeal to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission in Raleigh, North Carolina. We do our best for the county to try to handle all of them as much as we can, you know, with them without having to go to the Board of Equalization and Review. Why do you have to fill out a form? A real estate is a constant state of change. There are approximately fifty-five thousand tax parcels in Rockland County. It would be impossible for the tax department to know everything about each one of them. The appeal form allows us to gather information on particular parcels and ensures the accuracy of the information in our database. You may already have an independent appraisal of your property you can submit with your appeal. These forms allows you to provide information that explains your reason for appeal. It allows the tax department to allocate its resources to process all appeal requests promptly and efficiently in order to save tax dollars. Here is an example of what the online Check My Value tool will show. It'll show you the different variances in the properties. I haven't put it on the website now because I'm waiting for us to update our values and everything before I put it out there, but it will be out right before our notices are mailed. Valid reasons for appeals. Your assessment is substantially lower or higher than the market value of your property. Your assessment shows inequity as it relates to the assessed value of comparable properties and evidence of inaccurate data. Some invalid reasons for appeals. The percentage of change from the previous assessed value, the ability of the owner to pay the anticipated tax. There are programs available to assist the elderly or disabled with low incomes to individuals who qualify. And there are also programs out there for disabled veterans that we have. Taxpayer's opinions of value should not be based solely on the actual sales price or private appraisal of the property. There is better evidence of a different value such as that supported by verified sales of comparable properties. Appeals should not be based on the actual rents of a commercial property when rents are not reflective of the economic rent for that property type. An appeal should not be based on the income stream of the business. Thank you for having me this evening. That's just a brief summary. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain again the NCDOR sales ratio? I see that, but I don't understand what makes that ratio go down? What are we comparing it to?
The North Carolina Department of Revenue sends us a set amount of sales they want us to do each year. So then they select those sales and we have to verify the information with those sales with our tax values at the current time. And then that is what they base it off, all the hundred counties on, is that sales ratio. Which that sales ratio, I'm gonna make this quick. That sales ratio is what affects our public utility. We lost two-hundred-and-forty-nine million in public utility this year and one-point-seven-three million in tax revenue dollars. But we knew the economy, the market was going to change, so we went ahead and scheduled a revaluation early. Because the sales ratio, if it drops below eighty-five percent or goes above one-hundred-and-fifteen percent, the state mandates us to do a revow within three years. So we had already set ours and started it in the winter of twenty-one, right? Yeah, in twenty-one, we started with the effective of twenty-four because we knew that if we didn't do that, the carry was going to lose in dollars. Of course, some areas more than others, but that is what the sales ratio does. Does that help?
I don't understand how you lose values.
If a home sold, if we were a hundred percent on value of a home in 2019, and say it sold for a hundred thousand dollars. Now that same house sells for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Our ratio is gonna remain the same until the next revaluation. The same as if the market pulled down. So the state mandates us to do a revow every eight years by law. But then the county, we're looking at going to another full year. This is a five-year because of 2019. But what happens is when it goes down and the sales start going up and our ratio is down here, the state mandates us to do it if it hits below that threshold. So then you lose, you see it, really see it in public utility, especially, you know, in big areas like Eden where big energy laws in there is when you really start seeing a lot of the money lose. And then you go continually lose that money until you do a revaluation. And at the revaluation, you wanna try and bring everything up sort of to the current model. So this year, we done something a little new and got it voted on by the committee, was we set a range in our rates. We set a range in our land, we set a range in our main area rates for our footage. Because each thing has its own value that comes up to that, you know, sales price. So we said it and we can now, we're still working on it. And the reason, we normally have mailed them out by the end of January. With this market, we wanted to give them a little time to see what they would do and we still can reflect our final value off of sales through to the end of December. Even though, you know, it's the middle of January, first of February, we still can work on our rates. Because the main thing is that, you know, we're far enough in the market. And if the market turns, how many turns after the first of January, one of February, it ain't nothing we can do. But if we go on a full year revaluation, that'll cut out the aspect of losing all that public utility money. And it'll be less detrimental, you know, to the citizens of the county to going from this value to this value. And so I've been going around a lot and speaking to the senior citizens around in the county. And I've gotta go to Eden, Madison, and other different areas to speak and just let them know, you know, about the concessions and the AB things that are out there to help them with their values. Because the values, unless the house is in really shape from what we're seeing, it's valued going crazy. But the state mandates us to do it. When you're in a revaluation year, you send them in yearly. But during the other time, we send them in quarterly. And then they mandate us to do a certain percentage of our sales in each county and state, you know, has to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Thank y'all. Sorry I'm wrong.
Is everybody here? We need to take a little break before... We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Projects, consideration of lead service line.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Inventory contract recommendation and related budget ordinance amendment enclosure five, Josh Beck, Public Works Director, Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager, and Administrator of Financial Services.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the Council City Manager. So before you tonight, we've been here before a couple times about lead service, if you guys remember. Those were more about the grant side of this, though, if you recall. One of those that we brought for you was to set up a lead slaughter, our water treatment plant superintendent has to grant administrator, if you will, for that particular grant. We're still way into here. We anticipate hearing how that went sometime around the first of February. But what I have before you tonight is the actual contract from an engineering firm who's kind of specialized in this, who took an early lead in this. They're doing another, a number of other municipalities in the area, and they're doing this inventory for us that is required by EPA. Again, I know I mentioned this in the past, but that deadline to get this submitted to EPA, DEQ, is October 16th, 2024. So not too far in the near future, but that's why we want to go ahead and bring it forward tonight, to make sure that those guys have ample time to go through this. For the new council members, just to kind of bring you quickly up in speed, this is basically in response to Clint, Michigan. And if you recall, that kind of hit during the Obama administration, when the current president was vice president. So this is in response to that, so that they mandate utilities to then start inspecting for lead service. And when we say that, we really are being from behind the meter. Technically, as a utility, we are not responsible for anything behind the meter, right? If you have a leak at your house and it's behind the meter, unfortunately, you pay for that water consumption. If it's in front of the meter, that's our responsibility. We also make that water service repaired as part of public works. But anything behind that, you need to get a licensed plumber to get that resolved. So what these guys will do, they'll work closely with us. They'll look at our tap records. They'll also look at a number of all of our building and plumbing permits to try to evaluate and understand when this particular structure was built, to understand what year it was built in, to then have an idea, was that in a time period when they were still using some potential lead service, as well as galvanized and maybe with some lead fittings in front of it that would then also cause a reaction. So it's quite the endeavor. Our records here are on paper, not electronic. So you'll see one of the fees in here is data management. Part of that process is for them to digitize those records as part of this, because this will be an ongoing thing. Every three years, we'll have to kind of update this as we move forward, especially as we identify areas where it's really unknown what the current material is in that particular situation. Obviously, if you build a house in the last 20 years, they're going to rule that out pretty quick, and that's kind of easy. But obviously, we're going to have a lot of homes that fall within these areas and where it's just going to kind of be unknown. They'll take that data, they'll look to see if some major plumbing revisions were done, and then kind of rule that out. So they'll go through, there's about 25 questions, if I remember correctly, on this form that they have to fill out for each service that we have. So, and we're roughly 68 to 7,000 connections that would be a part of this. It's a lot of work, especially since you've got about nine months, right, to get this done at this time. So what they've presented to you tonight is this proposal in the amount of 122,560 to complete that. Again, it is a mandate from the EPA. It's not something Josh came up with overnight by any means. And again, it's broken down into three parts. Project management for 22,300, 21,000 for that data management, and then 79,600 for the lead service inventory and submission to the DEQ consultation team. If there's no questions to that, then I'll have Mr. Phillips come up, and he can talk to you about the budget amendment necessary to pay for that service.
So when they digitize their inventory, that then become our properties?
Yes, ma'am, because we'll have to continue. Like I said, every three years, we're going to have to update this again as changes occur. So it'll be kind of a live document, if you will. And again, having this now will make that process in a couple of years much more simplified, because a lot of that lead work, if you will, is already done. We're only looking at any changes that may occur. Say you, say one of your houses was an unknown, but you've recently done a plumbing revision, then we can pull that out of the unknown category and into a known, you know, acceptable material PNC, whatever it is that you plumbed your house with copper.
Does this digitize all records?
This has digitized the building and plumbing records, not like, not if you did electrical renovation or mechanical, no, it would not.
Well, that, I'm getting pertaining to it, but all pertaining to it?
Yeah.
So it's not just a portion of them?
No.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
So, as Josh presented, the price tag for this is $125,000. So we're looking for you to approve the contract. I guess that would be one motion, that you're going to want to do budget amendment as well to pay for it. So the 125,000 is going to come from our water fund reserves for this contract. We do have a grant application pending, and hopefully, we'll get 100% of the funding through that grant. But if we wait until we find another grant, the guys will come up out of this project that I've presented in my. We need to go any different start. If we get the grant in, I can come back and reverse the entry into the 125,000 water reserves. But for now, you know, passing approved contract and approving the budget.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the recommended contract?
So moved.
Got a motion, I'm sorry. End of discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Did you get that all?
Yep.
Yes.
Now we need a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendment. So moved. Motion on second. End of discussion. Those in favor? Thank you. Next item, consideration of redundant water line easement negotiation proposal. Accompanying budget ordinance amendment and capital ordinance amendment. Enclosure six, Josh Beck, Chris Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys will also recall, we brought this to you several times as well. One of the presentations, of course, we've talked about the route of this proposed redundant water line. Some of you probably remember that. Involved a separate one for that contract to do utilizing McGill for this. But at the time that we brought all that forward, we didn't truly have the design. We knew a route, right, that we were going along 29 Business. But until we got survey data and actual, a true alignment of the water line on design in, you know, in a paper form, we really didn't know exactly where the right way was, what existing conflicts we may run into. So trying to estimate at that time what the utility needs would be, and what would need to be negotiated at the time is very difficult. Truthfully, you drive down 29 Business, and you look at the power pole placements, which is a general indication of rightway, you'll see that they are fairly wide. But what we determined is that DFT does not have the best records in that area. It's not a recent renovation project like Freeway Drive, where they would have a better location of their rightway. So in this, it was determined that 34 easements would be needed as part of this project. I'll remind you that the total length of this is roughly 15,000 and some change. So we're crossing many properties. For the purposes of this, we only needed 34 easements. The design firm McGill recommended this company, which is Rightway Consultants. There's a couple firms in the state that do this, but not many. And so we started working with them. Of course, we talked to you guys on some two-on-twos about how we wanted to proceed with this. They had some questions for us about various aspects of the negotiation. We got y'all's feedback on that, and presented that back to them. And so what I have before you tonight is the negotiation part of this and an estimate, if you will, on the appraisals that are needed. Until they really get into some negotiations, there may be some additional funding needed if we have to go down certain avenues that in order to condemn, if necessary, some of these parcels. Obviously, the water line, as you know, we've come one way, we've come the other, but if we don't get all the easements eventually, in some form, in fact, we'll end it. I think we all agree this is a very vital project. The current line was built in the late 70s. So the existing water line that is there today is nearing the end of its service life, and without it, we simply can't provide water to the city, the city. So, so the contract before you tonight is for $201,800 for that initial consulting and negotiating with this, with this company, again, Rightway Consultants LLC, to begin the easement acquisition process for this project. They will continuously keep us updated. I'm sure we'll have some meetings in the future about what their status is and where they are in some of these, you know, how, how it's going, that sort of thing. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this particular contract. But again, it's necessary to begin the construction of that water line. Yes, ma'am?
The negotiation fees, the 34, is that what they propose the average to be?
Yes, ma'am.
So it could go up or down?
Well, there's 34 easements needed, so that's how they base their price. And then based on the feedback we provided, they then came up with that unit price fee per easement required.
So that could change, is what I'm asking you?
No, I don't think that will change. What will change is possibly the number of narratives or the title searches that are needed. You know, we talked a little bit internally that if we have to go certain routes, then there will be additional services from them to, to work with Bill and myself and go through those processes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Any other questions?
So again, if you all approve this contract, we need to pay for it. So the budget amendment, there's two pieces of budget for this one. The first one, budget ordinance amendment number 13, is to allocate water reserves for this purpose. So 202,000 dollars of budget there. But this is a capital project, a water line project, so there's a capital project fund. Capital projects fund is used when a project's going to go more than one year and/or has special funding, you send it to a separate fund to keep the account separate. So we have a redundant water line capital project fund. So the second phase is to amend that capital project fund as well, show the 202,000 coming from the water fund to that fund to be spent on professional services. So we approve, we approve the contract. We need the budget ordinance amendment number 13, and then approve the redundant water line capital project ordinance.
All right, was no questions? Can we get a motion for the redundant water line easement negotiation proposal? All right, got a motion on second. End of discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we need a motion for budget amendment 13. Second. End of discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. And thirdly, we need a motion for the capital budget fund for the redundant water line. Motion for that. Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
And we got a second. End of discussion. Raise your right hand. All right. Next, consideration of bids received for the wastewater treatment plant. Biological neutral removal. Project accompanying budget ordinance amendment and capital project ordinance amendment. Enclosure seven, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll sit down after that's finished. Actually, you know, for once, some good news. So you guys may recall that we actually opened these bids back on March 9th. And you'll see there in my memo that the base bid at that time was 8.62 million dollars. I'm excited to, to bring to you tonight that when we opened them on November 16th, the lowest bid that we received from Turner Murphy was actually 7.637, so just shy of a million dollars. And we truthfully, we, we changed a few things. We extended the contract by a few months. That was one of the concerns. Some of the contractors in that first bidding expressed. And we changed some unit quantities a little bit, because we felt they were a little too, too, too much that, that we needed for, on some of our slush hauling and different things that would be required. So tonight, before you, I've provided several attachments. Certified bid tab, which I've outlined there, shows the base bid pricing. And then six different alternates that were also proposed. And again, you know, when we opened in March, we weren't going to be able to accept any of those due to the overall cost of that project. But coming in under a million dollars from that number, we would greatly appreciate if, if you guys, as part of this, would accept, of course, Turner Murphy and their, their base bid price, but also the, the five alternates that I've listed at the bottom page. I'm happy to touch base on any of those if you have any questions. One of them I didn't feel was really necessary, is about $100,000. And so I removed that one from this. But there's, like I said, there's several things in here, so. The first one is the bid information sheet. So with the base bid information and the alternates, you can then see on the project cost summary, that is the total cost of the project now. Again, taking those alternates, it still comes in about a half a million less than we previously discussed. Probably on some two-on-twos, maybe April, May, somewhere around that timeframe when we went over all of our capital projects. But so that shows you all the legal fees, some of the design contingency, et cetera. Certified bid tab. And then at the very back is a resolution of tentative award. So what I'm, what I'm asking tonight is that you approve this tentative award, because we still need to go back to the LGC for final funding. You know, after the bid was open in March, we did get divertable approval for five million more. Obviously, there's paperwork associated with that. So this will be a tentative award until that funding is officially approved. Also, in that resolution, it will assign the city manager order as giving authority to sign up on some contingency dollars as change orders come in. We don't want to bring up a $3,000 minor electrical issue to you while holding up an $8 million profit. So that would give her authority within the contingency. And then the final thing that we do is it would actually set up a contingency amount of 401,700, which is roughly 5%. So we're asking for base bid, but the five alternates, set up a contingency, and then also give Miss Water as part of that tentative award the authority to execute change orders in the contingency amount. If it goes over the contingency amount, that's a different situation that we have to bring back for funding. That's just within that 400, might as well say 400,000. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I thought it was a lot at you right there.
Yeah, it was hard to keep up.
I guess, it's a lot. It, it's been a long time coming. If you think about this project and, and, you know, when the design started, and now we're finally here, and we're ready to actually get started, it's, for me, it's exciting. I know the plant staff are excited. It will allow some additional capacity at the plant for future growth. So it's, it's a good thing.
When do you think they'll get started?
So the initial conversations with them, similar to Headworks, they want to do a delay notice to proceed. This is, again, fairly heavy equipment. So they want to, of course, get through some middle process and get pumps here and get, you know, valves and some of those larger items here. So they want to delay it six months from when we give them the, the notice to proceed, which, in talking with staff, it's no real point to mobilize and be in the operations way and not really achieving very much. So, so we're, we're in agreement with that. And then it's about an 18-month construction timeframe after that. So I wouldn't foresee anything, you know, to probably follow.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Any other questions on these things for Turner?
Okay, so if, if you all do approve the contract that Josh just presented, then we got to handle financing for it. So the original financing for this project was provided by DEQ, the zero interest loan, a 20-year payback, no interest. And we also had $500,000, $80,000 grant from Gold Leaf that we still have for the project. So DEQ did tell us when we went back that the, the project was going to be more, that they had funding. So they have approved us on the DEQ side for additional funding, but the local government commission has to approve debt issues. So the local government commission has agreed to put this on their February agenda to be approved at the state level. So that's why the contract is pending that final approval from the local government commission. But I prepared a memo that just kind of showed you the original ordinance that was adopted in April 2018, where the project budget was 4,000,000, 542,251. The new project budget is 9,537,608. So you have a capital project ordinance amendment to report the difference, which is 4,009,952,57. Almost all of that is going to be covered under the, the loan, the zero interest loan. The only thing that's not covered is you have to pay a, there's no interest. We pay a 2% fee to the state when you borrow money through this program. So that 2% fee, you do not use their money to pay them. So that has to come out of our reserves. So the additional fee on the additional amount is 97,946. So budget ordinance amendment number 14 takes 97,946 from the sewer fund reserve and moves it to the capital project. That's the money we're going to have to put, additional money we're going to put in for this project. And Josh did mention that, that the city manager has authorities to approve change orders under the contingency. But the capital project ordinance we adopted, and it's in here, again, with this amendment, those are change orders that are 50,000 and below. Any change order over 50,000 would have to come back to city council and work.
So when you said that they approved the additional amount, and that will be a zero percentage of two?
It'd be at the same, yeah, they told us they had money. It would be at the same rate in turn as the original financing.
Thank you.
It's hard to beat zero.
We'll take it anyway, right?
Well, a grant, a grant means zero loan, but they didn't offer that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Josh? We have a motion to approve the BNR capital project amendment. Motion.
Okay.
We have a motion on second. End of discussion. Very good. Those in favor? Thank you. Yep. Yep. A motion to approve budget ordinance amendment number 14. So moved.
Okay.
Got a motion on second. End of discussion. Those in favor? Now, and finally, capital project ordinance amendment. A motion to approve that.
So moved.
That's time. Thank you.
This is going to be a resolution. Remember, the resolution for the tentative award is just the first one that was added and went out with the other books in connection.
Okay, but we still need to do the capital, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion to approve, Barbara, did you get that last one?
I'm sorry, say again.
Did you get the last one, the capital project ordinance amendment?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can thank, okay. And now a motion to approve the resolution. So moved.
Second.
Motion on second. Yep. End of discussion. If those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Item number 10, appointments of council liaisons. I don't think I need to read those out, see where you are. I'm also appointing Ms. Lisa Simpson to the housing authority board. That's a mayor and appointment, that's why. We had public comments. Do we have anyone that would like to speak before council? Seeing then, we'll move from there and go to managers for board.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be exceptionally brief, brief tonight. I did want to just make a note, Mayor, if it's okay. Ms. Stein-Sawyer with the Chamber of Commerce did reach out to me a few moments ago, and she will not be able to attend. So she does send her apologies. So just wanted to share that with you, there'd be no report tonight from, from the chamber. I did want to just make a couple notes. First and foremost, I really wanted to thank our IT department. You guys have one above and beyond to, as you see the new TVs, which is weird, with yourself, I'm talking, see the new TV monitors. So I think, I know we've had some glitches tonight, but I mean, what a team effort on our IT staff to make this possible where we're not rolling in a single TV. So just bear with us as we continue to move through these changes. But just thank you on behalf of all of us for all that you do for IT, for us. And then just a couple more announcements. I did just want to let each of you know, I'll be sending out an email in reference to our upcoming retreat. We are looking at Thursday, February the 15th, and Friday, February the 16th. So two-day retreat. It would be from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. both days. And we're hoping to possibly have it at the new event center at the penthouse. But more details to come. I'll send out an email. Just go ahead and put those dates, and let me know if those dates would not work for you. And then the final announcement I had, I sent out an email earlier this week just to mark your calendars. They're doing something a little different this year with the North Carolina League of Meniscapalas State Dinner. Instead of everyone going to Raleigh like we have in the past, they're actually going to host at different locations. So I sent out an email earlier this week, but just go ahead and lock in, the closest one for us would be us to attend at Winston-Salem, and that would be March the 20th. So more information to come. We don't have a, a specific time yet, but go ahead and mark your calendars for March the 20th. It'd be in Winston-Salem. And as soon as we get more information, we'll share that. And if there's no other questions, I'm happy to address my report, but I'll yield my time and turn it back over to Mayor and Council. So thank you for the opportunity.
Mayor Proten, Brian, for council report. Mayor Proten, Brian, for Council reports.
No report, this one.
Councilman Harris?
Very brief. Attended the, attended the Reevesville Municipal Alliance Assembly meeting on November 27th. Also, attended the Human Relations Commission meeting on November 28th. Also, attended the community meeting, Up With Christ and Down With Crime, that was helped designed Baptist Church. I didn't put the date back, but I'm there. Also, as always, it just was absolutely delicious. December 21st, Public Works Barbecue, and just enjoyed fellowship there with the city employees. And then, on the grand get-together, what a, what a, what an honor for me to be there and for the whole city. December 22nd, the burial of the Time Castle. That's why I said tentative, tentative. Anyway. That's why, that's why. I, I tempted. But that's my report.
Councilwoman with Deja Nation?
Oh, good afternoon. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to attend Deosso because of my skillness. But I was, in November, I was attending the National Legal Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, swearing in at the city hall, and then, the 12th, December 15th, 13th, I'm sorry, I intended to go to the Christmas party, and after that, I was unable to attend anything else. Thank you so much.
Councilman Coats?
On December 7th, I was able to attend the city employee luncheon as a retiree at that point. So, that was fun. And on the 19th, I attended the Coffee with a Cop at La Boca, Boca, if I'm saying that right. And at the Sip House, I think it was the same day that afternoon, cooking from Santa, and also, as well as the Time Castle burial of the cop.
Councilwoman Scobie?
No report, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Ward?
I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for Genesis, along with the mayor, various other chamber events, Public Works barbecue, the employee lunch, Time Castle event, and the CED, the community meeting that could go away to tell.
I want to forego my report and give another formal welcome to Councilman Coats, Councilman Ward, to, to the big guests. Appreciate you being here. You know, we're going to be just great.
Good to meet you.
And I also want to say that I'm proud and happy to work for citizens of Reevesville to have the best staff. Yeah. It is such a good situation. Our employees go the last extra mile to make Reevesville the best place that it can be, and I appreciate that more than you.
Mayor, I'd like to say just one other thing.
Okay.
I just want to say that, just kudos to Assistant Senate Manager Chris Phillips and all the committed work, and him didn't outsmart y'all on that event, the burial of the Time Castle. And also, just for, you know, each month, the special things that you had going on and whatnot, a lot of hard work was put into it, really appreciate it. Also, I want to make sure I say this because my wife wants to be guilty, and it was absolutely beautiful hour downtown with the Christmas decorations. All the hard work was put into that absolutely beautiful, I mean, no, no one, no one around had more beautiful downtown than we, than we had in Reevesville. So, we thank all the city employees, hard work invested in that.
We had people from Winston-Salem, from Greensboro, from Virginia, and all the way out to come and take pictures. A lot of them, Barbie, and there were a few kids then, too. So, you get to nail it in there.
I knew it was Barbie of all ages.
That's right.
Was that Barbie's car?
Well, that was a very popular car. Very popular. All right, next, we'll be moving to the first full conference room for a closed session to consult with an attorney to pursue the attorney-client privilege pursuant NCGS 143-318, 11, 8, 3, and 5. We will not be returning to the chamber, so we appreciate everyone. Thank you.